So, this is the June 8, 2023 evening of the Land Marts Planning Board. Even O'Donnell, the Chair, and I'm calling the meeting to order. We have all the men, all the members here, except for John. The work tonight. I think designate Rick as the voting member tonight. You didn't make thought in the site visits that you had problems finding.
I couldn't find it. I was on Packard Road for an hour. Never found it.
Well, I think since Rick went to the site visits, we probably should have him. I mean, you can discuss, obviously, but I think try to have it a policy, the people who have been able to.
Let's know where it is.
On Packard Road, the Pine Drive, about the bottom of the hill, take a left on the Pine Drive, follow that all the way down.
Where is Pine Drive?
Off of Packers.
I know. I was on Packard. I went up and down that road three times.
Robinson Drive.
Robinson, yeah, which I get also.
Down the hill, and just as it's sliding out, Pine Drive, the gravel road, he goes in there.
It's not, it does?
Yeah, they had the list of above.
I saw the names. I never saw Pine Drive. Okay, that was it.
Then it's Hemlock Drive and then Jones Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Uh, why don't we pass on the minute, since we got a lot of people here? Deal with those at the end. Um, so for old business, the first matter is the subdivision. Amendment approval application. For the Don proposal of revocable fraud. So I, I learned from the town office this week, apparently a couple of, well, with one call and one person came in. That the notice that was sent out. The envelopes that were sent out didn't include an enclosure. So we're unsure, we know at least two people. Didn't get an enclosure. One at least was Blaisfield. Road, I think it was a Mr. Brush. I don't know if he's here tonight.
Third layer on the opposite side of the road.
Yeah. So my thought, I mean, unfortunately, we had the April meeting that didn't occur. Hate to kind of kick this down the road any further. I mean, this, I, I'd feel differently about this if it were. Brand new subdivision. So I guess what I propose, if everyone agrees. That we go forward with the review of this. And that we promptly send out. Decision, a decision if, when it's made. And we have to send it to all the abutters. Um, so we're sure they're aware. They have, as in any case, 30 days to appeal. So that if someone feels. They have been not afforded notice and they have some issue with this. They have the opportunity to. File an appeal or ask us to reconsider. But at least that way. This doesn't get delayed any further.
Okay. They, they will be made aware that they can appeal with, with the decision.
We'll have to send the, the appeal right, or we'll put a statement in.
Right.
That they can either appeal or ask the planning board to reconsider. But this is only a subdivision, as I understand it, really to change. Couple of the lot lines and do away with an access way.
That's correct.
It's not creating an additional lot, not. Really changing the use in any significant way. To make what is now a commercial lot residential, right? Effectively.
Well, you have a commercial, it's a combined commercial. George buildings with a residential portion, providing.
A residential.
And actually is putting back the way it was first conceived back, I think, in 2007. That's, that's always. Putting some additional smaller into adjacent.
So how do people feel on this matter? What's? Could this be passed over to the next meeting, or should we attempt to review?
Can I say something there, Steve?
Sure.
Mr. Composa has a pending sale. It's already been delayed. He's had to postpone it. Well, it's a pair, it's not necessarily fair, but it's important that he's afraid that he might lose a sale. If he does. Or it doesn't be accidentified, just there. When he started talking, decided to contract a sale, we would have. Schedule once he said we could submit in April, fall, we gotta know what happened there. We submitted in May. Hopefully for action.
All right, thanks for your question.
I've got one question. What about the decision on previous amendment? Does that show up? Anything or?
They're on the registry. I did it.
In the registry of G, it's on the record.
What, what's the issue with the previous decision?
Because I have a concern with just multiple amendments on a subdivision.
There's no, there's no criteria, say, or anything else about being multiple amendments.
They're referenced on the plans. I, I looked at the registry. I didn't find it. There is. There was a file. I think we had the file at the last. I was here.
No, all the amendments are referenced because they have to be.
Give it to Ray if you. Oh, you have to need someone to ask about it. Missing. I don't know. Somebody give me an angle. This is by Lou Stopp. For your application. Back to 2001. So we got.
Just continuing.
I've got lot three and lot three A.
All right, that's.
It's really getting real.
And there's a small, about 3.8 foot fifth that will be debated in the lot six.
That's for the walkers.
That's correct.
Well, do we have a, a motion to go through any review criteria?
Motion to go through.
By Larry's second by. So we have the plan. That's the first thing. It also has a motion to find that the application is complete. You have a motion to find the application is complete. I gave second. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Ray, are you not opposed?
Uh, I think I will, I'll be abstaining when the vote comes up.
For the finding a complete?
Yeah.
So. All in favor, none against, one abstaining.
Yeah, yeah. Great, what you're considering. You done the application?
No, I'm okay with complete deapplication.
All right, um, the first matter. Is will the proposed. amended subdivision result in undue water or air pollution? We have a motion that it either will or will not.
Will not.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor that this will not result in undue water or air pollution? Five zero? Um. Will the subdivision have sufficient water available for the reasonably foreseeable needs of the subdivision? We have a motion that it will.
Second. Make a motion it will.
Larry, Dave second. Any discussion? All in favor? Will the. Subdivision cause an unreasonable burden on an existing water supply?
That it will.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Will the subdivision cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity? Of the land to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results?
It will not.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Will the subdivision cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe? Conditions through use of existing. And proposed highways and public roads?
That it will not.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Will the subdivision provide for adequate sewage waste disposal? Would it cause an unreasonable burden on? That's not very correct. Um, will it provide for adequate sewage disposal? So that there's not an unreasonable burden on town services if used?
No, it's not applied.
Yeah.
Not on the sewer.
Right. So it's a question whether there's adequate onsite.
Each residential building that's there.
Right, that it has. So it's a, I think the motion would be, will it? Provide for adequate sewage waste disposal? Their motion? That it will provide.
It will provide. I have a motion to provide.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Favor? Will this cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of the town to dispose of solid waste?
That it will not.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Will the subdivision have an undue adverse effect on scenic and natural beauty, aesthetic historic sites? Significant wildlife habitat or rare and irreplaceable? Natural areas or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Does the applicant have adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the criteria of the ordinance?
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Will this amendment adversely affect the quality of surface water? Or in reasonably, unreasonably affect the shoreline of ponds, lakes, or wetlands? Second. All in favor? Will this amendment alone in conjunction with existing activities? Adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater?
Will not.
Second. Um. Any discussion on that? All in favor? And I don't think we're in the hundred. It's not applicable. Does the amendment identify all fresher freshwater wetlands regardless of size?
It has.
Next second. Discussion? All in favors? Um, have the amendment amended plan identified any stream or brook within or rebutting the subdivision?
I think it has.
I think. Any discussion? Favor? Will subdivision as amended provide for adequate stormwater management?
It has.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Does this subdivision create lots with a depth of frontage ratio greater than five to one? Second. All in favor? Um, will this amended subdivision unreasonably increase? The long-term cumulative effect? Of a great pond phosphorus concentration during the construction phase and life of the subdivision?
I can also laugh.
Second. Um, and Bill Monaco did take a look at this and didn't see any issues. Obviously, water shit stamping. All in favor? Uh, will this amended subdivision? Form with adopted local regulations, ordinances, and the comprehensive plan? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Uh, Paul, have you suggested any conditions or?
No.
Just our standard conditions? Anyone see the need for anything additional to our standard conditions? Have a motion to approve this with our standard vision?
And make a motion to approve it with standing conditions?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? So it's four zero. Abstain? Or I guess, I'm sorry. Are you abstaining or just began?
Abstain.
An optimist. There's two copies there. The town can keep one, but I need one for the registry.
I'll try to get the decision written right away. Send it out. I think. If we would just send it out regular mail to, to the abutters. Or some type of statement that.
This morning, it's an empty hour.
All right.
That's the punch. Yeah, I would have folded, but the registry won't take.
No, they won't take them. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. The next item we had for Land Marts was the buyer. For land zoning application. And first claims. So Ray, I think you. Sent out that you and Larry and Rick will have the. Dave, did you make a trip separately to this?
Definitely. Probably part of the weekend.
I went down there this morning. So Paul, do you want to explain again what the?
Yeah, yeah, the buyer, they're looking to somebody to have a plan. These. Take the, uh. Four feet off the eastbound side of the building that's side towards the lake. Reconstruct that on the west side of the building. Although it's the rear of the building, and they had eight additional feet. Total, uh. Where footage with the addition and everything else. Committed 991 square foot for footprint. And because of the. Location of the building with respect to the lake being less than 75 feet, they're only about up to 1,000 square feet. So it buys with all the criteria. For. The, uh, increase of the building, and the height still remains the same. Yep, it has committed building designs. It should be in the packet like that. Growing, the erosion control is there that suggested, obviously, the contract is going to have to adjust with.
I like the jacket of the foundation.
Plenty now. So what we're, what we're going to do right now is hitting on years, different.
Right.
Right, you know, where we're going to make the load bearing wall, we're going to be frost period, the carrier system. The walls are the load bearing now, those are going to become non. Like it's in the roof strip. So what you're just going to. On the one side that we're gonna. It's going to be. Um, it's going to become a load bear wall. And on the other side is going to be new construction. But we can be high on that.
You're going to put it on, additional peers.
Or we can take on something one existing. On the other side, we'll have white.
So the roof will be, actually won't be pitched towards the lake now. We pushed it to.
Yep, right.
If Bill Monaco was in favor of that.
And I spoke to Bill tonight. He wasn't aware our meeting was this evening. So he didn't write written comments, but. That was one of his. Comments to me was that the pitch would be so that it's not running off towards the front.
Also, also, um, like the existing structure is two by four right now, uh, wall framing, so we're going to be. Building that up to two by six before we do anything on, on the upper.
Now, we also know. Because of the. Location of the building with proximity to the lake that we're applying to DEP for permit by rule, fill that out today. Buyers has signed that tonight, so that will get committed.
Paul?
Yes.
My question, you said the building height was going to remain the same?
Well, I didn't say that.
Okay.
They, they want to exceed.
They're using the envelope of what it is. Right now, it's only like 11 feet.
Yeah.
We're going to give them, right now, he doesn't have a coated height, ceiling height, interior. We're going to bring them up to, up to height, and then we'll put the rest in the roof, uh, elevation to keep it under the envelope.
They need 20 feet on that, right?
Yeah.
That's essentially it.
And I think you've submitted three applications.
Pictures, yeah, which, uh, obviously have to go in with the permit by rule. And when it's completed, we have to take, post, yeah, commit them DEP and submit a copy to, uh, now.
So the entrance is gonna, like the entrance. Steps now are going to be where the addition is? Steps going into the camp?
Yeah.
So then they'll just extend.
Same side, yeah.
Same side.
Yeah.
It'll be closer to where you drive down.
Yeah, towards, towards. Just be a set of steps or whatever, like we got pretty much. It'll still be that back door too. We got this back door. In there and open that. The lights front, I guess.
Yeah, well, that's.
Lake is the back. I tell you what, yeah. Get confused, which is the front and the back on the lake.
So that's essentially the project in a nutshell. That's what we're asking for. Right.
Do you have a motion to approve this with conditions?
Make, make a motion to approve of the conditions.
Okay. I need to add to it, uh, the condition that they get acceptable permit by rules. What'll be a number? I mean, we have, we have our standard conditions or a permit by rule. Wired. Construction. Metted to the CEO.
Well, the town gets.
Gets coffee, yeah, right.
Once we submit it to DEP. They will email a copy of that. And if no, DEP has no objection to that, it's automatic.
You've been recommending. On most projects in the shoreline that there be under the. On most projects in the shoreline that there be under the. Rip edge of the roof. Some type of infiltration system. Significant crushed stone or something to, to slow the flow.
That has out there now, I'm pretty sure, doesn't it on the front, I, I think it's got, I don't know if there's enough, but we'll give you that.
Yeah, we will change the roof pitch.
Yeah, it's going to be the other way.
It's going to be the other way.
So still crushed stone drip edge.
Right. That would be another condition. Building permit. Um, application to CEO. So I think that would be the four things, standard conditions. Being permit by rule from DEP. Doll. Crushed stone dripping along the, underneath the roof edges.
East side.
Please die. And obtain a building permit. For construction. All in favor of approving with conditions? Okay. So we'll get a written decision out. No. Something.
Thank you, guys.
The. Somebody going to receive a copy of the contract for the waste system. I need. He's going to use an external waste system, a contractor. Okay. So we need to do, all right, copy of that, can we?
You guys.
They had an idea, I thought they were going to submit something, did that ever come in?
I didn't hear anything.
Well, we'll say, we'll put that on the building.
Yeah, they don't typically do a contract, maybe a. I don't think they would unless the company would write a, write something out, but, you know, invoice, invoice or something.
I'll talk to Andy about that. Quote.
In, in flash.
Yeah, when he issues the building permit.
Right, there was, there was a, what a party there.
Yeah, I saw it there today.
Maybe a proof of, you know, paying for it or something.
Yeah.
Received.
Yeah.
You're going to make sure it's properly disposed of.
Okay. Next item we have are. Let me go through Paul, but I know it's a different last name.
Good work lighting.
Yeah, okay. Come on up.
So after meeting on last Thursday, I had the plans changed to show that we're going to put drainage. From the new roof line.
Yeah.
With the gutters going into the woods on page three.
One of the things Bill Monaco mentioned that we discussed.
Yeah, that, and then, I mean, I don't have any documentation, but we'll put up the fence, yeah. Those were the two things that he had made mention and requested.
A fence?
A steel fence.
Oh, steel fence, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of our standard conditions is, is that, you know, appropriate. Pouring water, boss first.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it right at the top for it, it's the.
Are you doing it yourself, you have a contractor?
We have a handful of different contractors.
Yeah. So as my, my recollection is you've got kind of a space on the side of the building. That's where you're going to add a master bedroom?
Yeah, bathroom and closet, it's essentially a cape with a cape and a job, so we're just looking to square it off.
Yeah, they'll have discussed what a French frame.
Yeah, which is what's on page three, just showing that we're going to do that from the gutter.
I think his suggestion was some kind of perforated pipe and cracked stone or. Wrapped in fabric and then draining towards the south side.
Yeah, we'll probably put crushed stone in there and have it go into the woods because we have the ability to have woods there. Yeah.
Will any of this be within twenty-five feet? Remember by rule necessary. Wing of the site.
Went to the. On the back side of way.
Yeah.
That's a driveway.
Yeah.
You did hardscaping years ago.
If you done it for that, you lost yesterday.
You don't spend all your money.
Yes.
Well, once you're there for a few years, then you have to go around every few years.
Yeah.
Fix everything that you fixed before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody have any? Further questions on this one?
Straightforward.
Motion to approve with condition.
Make a motion to approve conditions, second.
So.
We just have to meet back with Andy.
Yeah, so we'll write a written decision, we just got to decide now, so we have some standard conditions which include, you know, the. City build fence and if you don't get the construction done within a year, you might have to.
Renew it.
Renew it. You're, you're going to put some type of infiltration system again under the.
Yeah, we're going to extend the gutters for the rest of the.
Yeah.
Front of the house and then it'll be drained into the woods.
Building permit.
Yes.
Anyone have anything else? All in favor? Great, we'll get a decision to you as soon as we can, it probably may not be next week, but we'll try to get it right out.
Oh.
But we'll mail you a decision, once you get that, I mean technically. Anyone can, on a butter. Felt like it could try to appeal, but. Unlikely, so then you can go to Andy and get a permit, when you get the decision, just talk to Andy, you know, on. Mondays and Wednesdays, I think.
Yeah, we already met with the, I already met with the plumbing.
Yeah.
Vector, so that one's all done.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right. Next item I had for new business. Elbethaw, is that yours call too?
Yes. Yeah. I dropped both nine copies to the town office.
I know, I never got one, I thought I was going to get one electronically, so.
You can go back and get it. It was all in a, it was all in a. You know, accordion type folder. I don't know where it went.
Anyone have the application? Anyone get it?
For what?
This Elbethaw.
For authors, yeah, he turned it all in and I went in there tonight and grabbed this whole stack of stuff that was on top of the. Where we keep everything and I don't know where his stuff went. I mean, it was in a great big accordion system.
Yeah, it was in a, yeah, nine copies.
You know, like seven copies of everything.
There were nine copies there. Or maybe the codes officer kept two.
I don't know, I like I said, I just counted, counted real quick, I thought one of you guys had gone in and grabbed it.
I went down today and they said they didn't have anything pressing.
No, they gave you, yeah.
And no, not one of those.
Nope. Nope.
Well. I think what we do is we. Consider accepting the application, this is one that have, we have sent notice to a butters. That one, Bobby here.
I have one copy.
All right.
I think the planning board, I'm going to say comment. Maybe it might have turned, but the planning board, the town manager, the CEO and the clerk at the town office need to sit down and get on the same wavelength. Because there's a lot of confusion, when I took those nine copies into the town office, the clerk didn't know what they did. Sat down with the codes officer, he took them, he was somewhat confused, they said it's a new application. They were all there.
Yeah, they were, I saw them and everything was.
And that's not the only thing that's going on, is they don't know what to do with the fees that are the planning board requests. Because when Mr. Myers went in to pay his fees and then I took in the fees for Mr. Proposa. Of course, didn't know what to do. I had again, talked with the. Codes officer, we talked with Lori Walker. Finally, we got the saying, it says, all right, we'll take the funds, I says, yeah, you have to take the funds. So, and then I, I learned that there's no more escrow accounts on the planning board account, following tracking this, so.
We're, we're dealt, we've been dealing with this, Paul, this is not news to us.
But anyway, that, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, Paul, we understand. And we're still.
Struggling.
Struggling and our next step is. Pull the ordinance, give it to the board of selectmen, ask them whether or not follow it.
Yeah. So.
We've already been in, Ray and I were in. Couple meetings ago. That's why we have Darcy as a start, but hopefully this is going to, some of our problems hopefully are going to be.
Is it just not fair to the applicants?
Oh, I don't know.
This is the second time Mr. Elbethaw has driven up from Massachusetts on a project.
Yeah.
But anyway, the project, if I may, and I know you only have the one application. The project is on Route one thirty-five. Uh, right next to the town transfer station property. Yes, it heavily. Uh, if I may.
Yeah.
See.
Yeah.
George Muddyneal Stream, Route one thirty-five. Uh, actually Berry Road. Uh, there's a significant amount of wetlands down there, we realize that we will be flying to DEP under NERPA Act. For Wetlands fill. Worth five thousand square feet. The proposed building site is out here on this road mall, down there, it'd have to be a wetlands crossing. Now, right up front, I know. The, there's an issue with the flood point. Limits of the hundred-year flood. Are taken right from FEMA data. Always that, but it's wrong, it's just plain outright wrong. I have the hydrographic data or the hydrologic data from DOP when they rebuilt this, I think in. Eighty-five, I think it was, yeah. They put the high water, the hundred-year flood plain here at a hundred and eighty-six. And. So we'll be submitting all that data to get the FEMA on their roll letter of map amendment.
How many acres in?
Total fartho at seven acres.
How many acres?
Seven.
Seven.
Far from one thirty-five, you know?
Well, the wetlands crossing isn't here, that's only about a. Over a hundred fifty, I think.
How much?
A hundred fifty.
Feet?
Yeah.
So right now, is it field?
No, it's all wooded.
It's all wooded, so is this, the field is down here?
There, there's no field, no field, it's.
That's, yeah.
No field. It's, uh, it's all a forested scrub wetland.
There's COVID, it generates us.
There's a long stream that goes down this way, you can see that.
Well, are we going to be able to get in there to look at the site?
You should be able to unless the rain doesn't stop. But yeah, you should be able to walk some ways through here, yeah. I'll have that flagged up.
No, flag it out.
Yeah. That's the shortest crossing on the wetlands. Over, uh, you have submitted with the application when you do receive the package, you have the application, you have a plan. Uh, you have a deed. Joiners, now the deed, you have several deeds because the. Elbethaw has acquired the property in the seventies from the town for unpaid taxes that they referred it into the trust. Uh, you also have a copy of SNEE's. Assessor's map before nineteen ninety-two because she's just referred to in earlier. That's, you have the soil evaluation, the preliminary soils evaluation. You have to just let it transfer. And you have, the press, it asks where you have declaration of the trust, the trust amendments.
Wait, no, you said you're going. Request a permit for some fill.
Well, yeah, you have a wetlands crossing, yeah, okay. That, that's under, uh, yeah, natural resource protection act, well, that's.
Yeah, okay, that's all the permits going to be forced to access that.
The, the wetland permits only run between the road and the wetland line, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is higher.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Once you. Receive, then there's a seventy-five foot setback, so the width of the building envelope is based upon the wetland borders and seventy-five foot offset. Yes, they have to cross through that area, but. The NERPA permit only provides the fill or alteration of a protected resource, which is the wetland.
Are these COVIDs?
No, it's a coverage.
What?
Those are covered, yeah.
Okay, so you're going to have to cover.
There'll probably be white over there, yes.
Yeah. So this will, this will be in full, yeah?
No, that's the town transfer.
The transfer station.
Yeah, yeah.
Town transfer station, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we're asking for this evening then, to, that the application.
Kevin, you think you can take the application?
Second.
When David's. We'll do a site visit. June twenty-nine. What, twenty-nine? Three weeks from tonight.
Think I'll be able to find out one.
Yeah. I'll, I'll get you a map. Butters.
There aren't them many.
We're all across one thirty-five, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want any other side of the stream, it's the town.
Well, last year.
And one, one on the southern joiner, the rest are all.
We won't require notice to the town.
Or piece of paper.
Got one, two, three. Five, six, seven.
Since June twenty-nine.
Yeah. Nine of butters.
Was it okay to go there during, after you mark it out, if I can't attend the, uh, Thursday night thing?
Yeah.
Don't, I'm just doing it during the week sometimes.
Yeah, sure thing. Yeah, it's not marked out yet, so give me a week.
Okay.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
What time did you say in the twenty-nine?
Um, I, well, we might, we're going to have a few, we're going to figure out how to. Know how many others we're going to have, whether we can do them all one night. Let's, how do we do that one? We do it at five, is that going to be possible? Five. Think we have other ones?
I've already done it. But I can do it again after he marks it up.
These. We're looking at a. Darcy, what's the fee for the mailing?
I have no idea. No, it's told me what it is.
Oh, they didn't, you didn't put the postage on the, they mailed it for you?
They did it for me, yeah. They had, Justin said there's a, there's a meter out here. You just leave all the stuff that you want mailed out with the girls. They run it through the meter and. I don't know how they keep track of this.
About ten dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, I think certified mail is. Little less than ten dollars.
Yeah. Well, I would say. Fee of a hundred and forty. Over the mailing to the Butters. Filing fee. I mean, we're in the process of. Working out our fees, but at this point. Say a hundred and forty. We'll. Schedule it for a site visit on the twenty-nine. Five o'clock. All right? Give that back and hopefully they'll find the. Other info for us when we.
We'll find out what's the town office.
We'll find out.
I trust them.
But it must be in there somewhere.
I'll go see Lori and tell her I want my own office. Yeah, exactly. It's the only way I can do it. No, it's. Everything is mismatched with Andy and there's no room for anything.
Well, I mean, I I said to, we'll, we'll talk about it now. Okay, the next item I have is. Bert Langjolier.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, just looking to replace a foundation.
Yeah.
An existing one that collapsed, caved in, right next to the mill pond. Everyone knows that real house with the whole room. That's, yeah, that's the one. So I'm just trying to get. Centerville for that. That the closest point to the water is like thirty-five feet, just put the tape measure.
Did you do a sketch?
I did. I I I didn't know I had to bring copies for everybody. I would have.
You have one with you, you're just.
Oh, I think Andy has it. And you know, I would have been better with that, but I saw everybody else coming up and passing. I'm like, oh, boy. I mean, I've got. Oh, good, beautiful. Yeah, that little bit, very small and it's. And the foundation will be on this side.
So what, what we require?
Yeah.
And I don't know whether you got it on the application, but the, the. When someone is in shoreline zoning, we need a couple of things. One is. One is we're required to have a couple of pictures of the existing site.
Yeah, I had, I had sent those to Andy too.
Yeah, okay, all right.
He's got the, I think he said he had the right ones, yeah.
Then. Then. You gotta kind of take just the lot. And. Kind of write the dimensions on it and show where the existing building is.
Yeah.
The distance from the road could be.
Yeah, I've got, I did all that.
You did all that, Andy's got that.
Yep, Andy's got it. He has a, he has his copies.
Stuff coffee, yeah.
Pretty sure that's. I filled out two sets of stuff, one for shoreline and one. Like regular for a property. And you point out the square footage. I got your Butters names and all the, I think I've got everything in there.
I'd be going by it. I'll do when I was a kid.
Well, a lot of people, we were selling all the junk out of it because it was packed to the ceiling. I mean, to the ceiling.
Yep.
Dead raccoons and junk.
Hmm.
They said it was an antique shop, more like a. Collectors, like I think, I don't know. We were selling stuff and it was amazing that people are coming in once and looking there, you know?
Antique shop was a nice. Is anything any good after the old roof and stuff? Any of the antiques any good?
There was a lot of good stuff.
Yep.
Very broken, all piled up in there. I mean, this high. Walked up on it, dishes. There was some furniture, there was aluminum, I took it to a friend of mine.
Yeah.
Hmm. I think there's a lot of good stuff in it. But it's good bones. It's a nice building.
I love fixing buildings like that. So, I mean, what's gonna be with the. Foundation under it? How does that change the height of the building?
It doesn't, because the building is, it it had one at one time, because it's got a stairway that goes down and the bricks and the blocks and the. You know, uh, the old fieldstone they used to use caved in there, but the building's about this high already. Yeah. So I just need to go probably four feet, I'm guessing. I'm I'm gonna try to put just six feet under it and not the whole building. It's just. The one that would, because you know how the old houses are all built? Most of them are on posts and two thirds of that building as well, somebody went under it with the cement and everything. So I'm just putting it, I think the foundation is sixteen by eleven. I'm actually making it a hair smaller, but. That way the sewer line can go in, the water line.
Right, because this is on water and sewer.
Yes, uh, well, it's on the sewer, but there's no water.
No water.
It had a shared well with the neighbor, but I'm not gonna go into that.
You're gonna put a well in?
Yeah, I'll put a well. And the sewer is, we're, we're in the process of checking. The, the town does know, well, the water and sewer said it is stubbed out there. I just gotta find the stub, but I think it's hooked up. But uh, I'm gonna get the town a winter if I guess with some dye. They put dye in and go to closest man. I'll do that in the process, you know? Yeah. That will be should it sew it off.
We're gonna have just two of Butters.
Yeah, one of the process, I think he's a town, he works for the town, I think. Yeah, Penny and then there's one woman next door.
Yeah.
And she's been notified.
You think Steve on maybe you look at the map?
Five hundred feet. Maybe a couple more under. Usually we notify everyone across, you know, the director Butters and anyone within. Five hundred feet.
With the post office across the street.
And church, I think the church is next, post office would be next. I used to, I used to own one sixty.
What's that?
Uh, this one. Yeah, one sixty.
Yeah.
The fireman was next to me, Sidaria. Tony, I think.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I I used to have this one.
Oh, it used to be the fire station?
Uh, yeah, this used to be, I guess, a fire station building. He tore it down and he lived in the old range, I believe. He had these two, he combined them, and I used to have this one. And this is the church.
Yeah.
That's the, uh, that's the post office, I believe.
Yeah.
It's the one guy that goes after, I met her, forgot her name.
So you might need a few more Butters, uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, at one, at one time, Andy said, you didn't think so, but he did mention that once. So, you know, if that's the process, that's not a problem.
You say right, five, it's five hundred feet?
Yeah. It is. That's what Andy said, I believe. That's good, because I got the footage right. I got the footage on YouTube. So can you tell me where the?
Recuperate that other house that you owned?
Yeah.
It's nice to see a lot of those houses that have been run down and come back and families living in them.
This one's eighteen hundreds, that one was nineteen hundred even. That's someone that, uh. They put a swimming pool in the back. And they buried the, the wall this deep. Now and put the swimming pool. Right through, so I replaced that about this high up.
Wow.
But it had good bones too. That was a nice old house. You know, folks them being just like this one. I, someone told me that was the church at one time.
Uh, I. Think it was a store at one time, at one time, when I just, when I was, you have the one across the street? No, the one, the one he's talking about.
The one I'm checking, because the woman that I bought it from. About her name, she was. And she said she had, I, she said it used to be a trance. I said, oh, geez, you know, joking. She said, no, I had it de-stankified, and she was serious. I said, no kidding. It's, it's all clear span. It's got. Like eight by fours going the whole way across. It's hardly moved. There's one piece of sill in the front about. Twelve feet missing and the rest is all there. Very little sag and it's a nice.
We have a motion to accept the.
They have a motion to accept the application?
All in favor? Site visit necessary?
It's easy to do.
Very small.
What do people think? I mean, it's putting a foundation under this.
Do you replace a existing structure?
Yeah.
I mean.
I said under an existing structure.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So much he can do, he can't really go.
Yeah. It's not much leeway. I mean, and we can drive by, I, I.
Yeah.
Unless people want a formal. I will, we'll send notices to the Butters and.
Yeah.
So. Go to the cover, the. Mailings we have to do and the regular filing fee, you can. Bring a check into the town office for a hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, one ten.
If there's anything left over.
Yeah, no problem.
They'll get it back. And so. I'll double check with Andy, um. So, once you're done, well, you'll be, this will come back to the next meeting in July.
Okay.
Second Thursday in July.
Yeah.
Then we'll kind of formally do the review.
Okay.
But I don't. anticipate you'll have much difficulty. You know, but. You might have heard some of the concerns. It are that. When we take any changes. To the building, we like to see if people can put in. Low-cost measures to kind of. Flow like the flow of water from the roof.
Sure.
You know, I don't know whether it's correct stone or.
Yeah. Something like. Stone would be a problem. Yeah, just on the ground, just like a trench of it, so stuff's not taking off.
Yeah, you know, let it infiltrate a little bit, yeah.
Oh, it helps. I know it does, yeah.
Water flows into. Way that's gonna go.
Mill pond.
Mill pond, yeah. It's to two oh two out of Little Wilson.
Yeah, probably, yeah, eventually end up in Annabassett.
Yeah, that's right. It does.
So. Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
So I just bring the fee in?
From the fee to the town office, they're open, they're not open tomorrow.
No, but.
Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, and after.
Just write on it, just tell, just put on the check, planning board fee.
Okay.
Believe they'll figure out where to go.
All right. Yeah, I see. Hopefully it goes the right place.
And you're gonna check on the additional. Butters or, or mention it to Andy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so he'll, he'll let me know what's going on, how, how, how I can progress.
Yeah.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
In a break or just roll right along?
Go.
All right. Next item I have here is. Raymond Korea, is that right? Saying that right? It's your patience. Busy night.
Wanna. Actually replace a walkway that I have already there on sixty-sixth Beach Road. We go there, um, we live actually in Westbrook. And I work in Westbrook, but I always come up here every weekend, even through the winter. And it's very difficult to, to get to my front door from the road because it's. Very slippery from the, the grass. Uh, there is a walkway there, but it's like almost. Into the ground, like, almost non-existent, um. I. Only brought one copy. I didn't realize I needed to bring a bunch of copies, but I have a, like a diary of what the. Walkway looks like. That's before I bought the house. And it's like almost non-existent, right? It's all kind of. Going into the ground and so we end up having to, you know, walk down to the house, to the front door and. Sometimes I have to pick myself up because.
You slide down.
Pretty slippery there. So I wanted to, um, I have a proposal from, uh. Davis Landscaping to put a walkway on there. Straight on, um, they're going to use permeable, uh. Davies.
Is it pretty much straight now, but walkway?
The walk, the walkway, uh, y- you'll see, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a wave there.
Water's over here, correct?
The water is behind.
Right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Notice the walkway there?
Is that still existing, that walkway?
Yes, but like I said, it's, it's in the ground mostly, um. So. Here's another one with the walkway, but I have dimensions that I wrote on.
Eighteen feet from.
Right, from the front of the steps. To the. To the shore is eighty feet.
And then one forty. Forty-six to from the general road.
Yeah, yeah, the sixty-six from the.
Yeah.
Bears to the road.
What's the distance from the road to the? Lake?
One forty-six, roughly.
One forty-six. Hundred feet, some is it?
Some is. You know, say probably twenty feet. The hundred feet.
How wide is the existing walkway?
Um, probably. I don't know, maybe two, two and a half feet or so. It's only two blocks, kind of, it, it's not very, very wide.
And a proposed one, kind of, you got wide?
Four.
Yeah.
I want to go four feet.
I think four is the absolute maximum that you can do with a permit by rule.
Okay.
What is?
I think four feet is the absolute maximum you can do with a permit by rules.
For the width of a walkway?
Yes. And this is, this is the proposal that Davis. Would material that he wants to use.
Can I look at this? Yeah, all you know, this picture, please?
Yeah.
So, does the coenforcement office, they have picture copies of the?
Yes, I, I emailed them to them.
Okay.
You said that was. When you rebought it.
Yeah, it was before I bought it.
And so it's kind of deteriorated some, obviously.
It's like you could see here, there.
Yeah.
Almost non-existent.
We have a motion to accept the application.
A motion to accept the application?
I have a question, doesn't he need a permit by rules? No?
I don't think so. He's not within twenty-five feet.
Eighty feet back.
He's eighty feet back.
Okay.
So it's twenty-five, anything within twenty-five would need a permit by rule. Do we take a vote on accepting them? Sorry.
We do not.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the application?
I guess from the pre. Project pictures probably a little closer than what we care.
You mean in terms of?
Better.
Visibility is the.
That might be a lot.
That's not bad.
Like this now, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's all those.
Those work.
Yeah.
You need your glasses.
I know, I don't need my glasses, where are they?
Um.
Need a lantern.
People think a site visit is necessary on this?
No. It's up to you people, I will.
Pretty flat looking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a major. Where the. I took the proposal to the board.
Yeah, and it's like, doesn't really exist. Eyes out there. So now you're gonna dig it.
Excavate the base. That way you can see why by. That's well, there's.
There's, there's beach roads, so they're just.
You said Davis?
Davis, yes.
Out of Lisbon, or?
Very, very. That's what I think so.
Yeah, they, they've done a lot of projects, environmental and. You know, they're up in their game as far as. Doing these types of projects.
Well, we could. I don't go over on the twenty-ninth.
I don't need to satisfy myself, the fact that I don't know it's Davis, I don't.
Your honor.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Um. Well, why don't I double check with Bill Monocle, see whether he thinks. It would be worthwhile to know, or whether what we can email him. Will be sufficient, so the Cobussy Watershed District sort of advises us. On projects that are in the shoreland. You know, looking at kind of environmental water quality issues. Don't think yours is. Certainly not as significant as some we see, so. Don't know that we need a site visit, but we can kind of let you know. Like, is there a phone number for you?
Yes, uh, two O seven, seven one two, six five five zero.
So if we think we need, so what we have to do is we have to send notices to the abutters within five hundred feet.
Good.
And if we decided to do a site visit, we would put that in it. But if we're just gonna say this will be reviewed at the July meeting, we tell them that. I think, my sense is it will just be a review at the July meeting, that we go through the. Review criteria that we need to, if any neighbor has some question or concern, they can bring it up to us, but. Don't anticipate. As you see tonight, we have no one come in to.
Uh, should he consider some, a little bit of erosion control just on each side of that? Probably, is there any danger of anything headed towards the water when they excavate around there?
I don't think so.
Cause the house is right.
The house is, yeah, the house is right there in the way of it, so.
Yeah.
I can tell you, if Davis feels there should be, there will be.
There will, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, enough, I am.
Okay. Um. So on the other side of Beach Road, where you, from where you are, is that the playground or are you further down? Where, where are you in relation to the playground and?
No, I'm further down, I'm, uh, probably about five houses in to that, so, to that road.
Yeah. Is there anyone across the street from you?
No, it's just railroad tracks.
Then you've got a couple of neighbors.
I have all, yeah, neighbors, I, I've talked to a couple more, I guess.
So usually what we have to do to the ordinance is, is, is notify. People within five hundred feet of your property. We have to figure out how many those are. Send them a notice. Um. I would say again, a fee of a hundred and ten should cover it, do you think?
Just bring it in.
Bring it into the town office, just put planning board, you know, in the line.
Right.
Planning board, shore land fee.
Okay.
And they're open Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
They're open a little late on.
Monday.
Monday, so they're talking about changing that, but they're open till six, I think.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Or if you wanna just mail it in, you can mail it in. What, but, you know. I don't know that they have a mailbox outside anymore, they used to have something.
I don't know.
There is a box there that you can, they have like, you'd need to make a deposit or.
Yeah, a drop box, yeah, I have seen that, yes.
Yeah, you just wanna make sure you label your check, so they.
Right.
We will be telling them what's in it, but.
Yeah.
Then we'll be back for the July meeting, unless we tell you we wanna do a site visit, but I don't think that's gonna.
So I should be looking to come here.
Yeah, second Thursday, and you know, you'll be under all business, so. Hopefully you have to wait as long as you have this evening.
All right.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming in. So. The Dave?
Yep.
Cadman, here for Tina Snyder?
Yes. Basically, what I wanna do is bury some water lines.
Do you need leaded paper, or just, sorry?
Fill the vision, part of the mission paperwork.
Yeah. Yeah, this is. Yeah, it's all right.
You can bounce.
No, I can. This is, I turned a little. What he sent in, yeah, page ones.
Okay. Basically, what I wanna do is, we wanna put a above-ground, five-hundred-gallon propane tank. We wanna bury the lines down the road. To feed each of these four cabins. That are all owned by the same person.
They're all the ones that are among the trees. They're the treehouses, is that?
That's, it's the same, it's her sister, it's like just on the road from it.
Yeah, all right.
So basically, the well is right. Right here, right next to the propane tank. Well, it's gonna feed into this first cabin, and then from there, it's gonna go, we're gonna tee off and feed into cabin two, cabin three, and cabin four. Along with the propane lines.
Or in these treehouses?
No, it's a different one. And then. I wanna replace a painting wall right in front of cabin two. Which is right alongside the road, and you can see this photographs of the. And wall, maintaining the wall to the way that you mentioned now. Um. Probably fifty feet. Yeah, we need to know where it is.
And this is the wall there, that kind of.
Yeah, that's the wall, what I wanna do is. Where it kind of turns, it's just gonna be a screator run. And talking with the owners today, they're thinking they wanna just go with boulders instead. Instead of doing it out of wood.
What's gonna happen to the? The trees, you think they're gonna?
I think they'll stay the same.
They'll stay the same.
This, the actual, there's a septic tank right in here. Septic tanks over here, so yeah, it, it just, walls, it, it's just gonna die out. Yeah, basically, I'm just gonna start it right there. Straight across, this is the corner of the camp, and then comes up a little bit further.
So what's your best estimate of the distance? Of this wall from the lake?
Fifty feet.
How, how deep are the lines gonna be? How, how deep do you put those?
These right here.
The only surface ones, or?
You, from here to here. From this camp to here is gonna be four feet deep.
Yeah.
From here over is just gonna be like two feet.
But it's gonna be seasonal then?
They think they wanna use it a little bit, be like three season. But.
Depending on like.
They're never gonna use them. I mean, they've got a beautiful lake house that's over here that they barely use, or they use. One of these cabins.
One septic to provide the.
Yes.
Septic for all four.
Yes, oh, actually, no. Cabin one goes back to her house. And septic is for two, three, and four. It's a huge system, it was put in. Fifteen, twenty years ago, but I had, somebody came up and did an evaluation on it and. It's like oversized and it's barely used.
You know, if that's on file with the town hall. Then.
The septic.
I don't know, no idea.
You know, some are, some are online at the state. The state has a site that some, many towns have partial. Records of septic systems.
It could be because we hired a company out of Augusta. Last summer, I believe, they came up and. Dug up the tank and the pump, and I had the pump re-conditioned, and they went up and. Ran cameras in the, in the leach field and everything.
Yeah, it was rich of field in relation to the tank, um.
Behind cabin. Right, up here quite a ways.
So there's.
It pumps up.
The material goes into the septic and then you.
Pump, oh, yes.
Like, at least, I don't know what the elevation down here is, but they're pumping up at least fifty feet.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a three-quarter was pumped. You know, because of that.
Have you? Just really, like, have you, um, have you checked that you can get the tank in the ground there?
It's gonna be on top.
Five hundred gallons?
Yeah, yeah, one of the horizontal ones.
Yeah, yeah, submarine version.
Yeah.
Dave, did they give you a application form? We've had some issues with our.
I mailed them a scripted. And I mailed them a new one. The one he had wasn't.
Wasn't not the right one.
Wasn't yet.
The new one?
This is what I have.
This is what you mentioned, yeah.
This is what she sent me, oh, okay.
All right.
And I needed.
Yeah, but you need copies back of this?
Why, no?
Okay.
I don't think so, anyway.
And those are the.
Purchase and sale agreement. So these.
Lessons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the abutters are all on there.
All right.
All right. So although you list the property owner as Gina, it's actually Cobussy Family Partners LLC.
Yes.
What road is this down?
Excuse me?
What road is this down?
Um, it's just a driveway.
It's, it's next to the golf course.
It's next to what?
It's the road next to the golf course?
It's a.
Oh, okay.
It's a lead, lead lane.
Yeah, okay.
What's happening in the back, major frustration?
Um. Did I say try? It was. The project started a couple of years ago by her brother. Pre-COVID, and then the camp set idle for a few years, and then he bought them. And I'm just finishing up cleaning, and we're gonna do, put a metal roof on it.
Also bring new lumber. That's a change structurally on it.
That was all done with the. Before she bought it.
This is.
And before she bought it. Yeah, she just bought it last year.
If this, if I was out in the water. Is this to the right or to the left of the, the treehouse?
If you go down, or if you're on the water, the treehouses would be to the right.
Okay, all right.
This sounds, it's like it's still under construction.
That one is gonna get, um, recided. It just, it got jacked up last year.
Yeah.
Um, nothing's really been touched on this, other than that nailer across.
Yeah, cause it, it looks like it's.
Well, there was gonna be a deck there originally. Um. I, yeah, there's a four-by-four nailer across because it's gonna be insulated on the outside of the hogs.
I'm gonna see what deciding is to. Not much going with all of it.
This is the gas line, it's gonna be buried.
Yes.
All the way along.
Yes, I met with the gas company and confirmed, you know, how they're gonna do this.
Uncle cut the tank, you know, last at first, right?
Right.
He's doing the gas.
Okay, AmeriGas.
Hundred and fifty-seven?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-five. So do we have a? Motion to accept the application?
Make a motion to accept the application?
Second. All in favor? So. Put this on for a site visit that same night at?
Six, seven, six to seven.
Oh, you think it'll take us an hour at the other one, maybe it was a quarter or six.
Yeah, fine.
And we do a site visit at? The twenty-ninth? Them if that's a problem for them.
Use them.
The owners?
These are all unoccupied.
Okay, so they won't, you know, just wanna see them.
Right.
So we, we have to notify the abotters. Give the notice of when the site visit is and then our next meeting would be the second Thursday.
Sure.
In July. We shouldn't be able to review this and we usually notify obviously what is your district to see whether they have any. Issues or recommendations in terms of. This, I doubt, you know, it's not like you're. Other than the. Dig, you know, small amount of digging you're doing, that's really not.
Right, the digging's right down the road.
Yeah. All the lines are gonna be fed along the road, is that?
It's, it's a road, but it's more for like gold cards and.
Yeah, yeah. But didn't we go down there a couple of years ago to look at something?
I think so.
Well, we've gone down a few times.
You did, I was gonna put a parking area up behind one of them.
Yeah, okay, yep. Get access issues, you have to have new access or something that ever happened or what?
We put the parking lot in up there, nobody uses it.
Nice to have the luxury of.
Well, what happened is that the guy that owned it. He inherited three camps and. This was his first project, he was, you know, you grow up with a billionaire father, you never had to do anything for your whole life and all of a sudden you get. Free camp handed to you. And, uh. COVID hit. And his architect was, lived in Paris. In vinyl haven, six months and six months. And.
Paris, France?
Well, yeah, across the pond, so. When his architect. Went to Paris, he wouldn't, he was afraid to fly back because of COVID. And this guy was afraid to make any moves. You know, design wise on fixing up these cabins, so. He panicked and sold them to his sister. So, and she already owned cabin one. So he sold her two, three and four. So if, you know, I had already started a, a major gut and remodel project on, on them. And then she's taken over, so you know, all the structural stuff was done on his dime. So I'm just in there finishing up, putting roofing and. Putting the windows in and siding.
What time for this one? Four or six, I think. I know, make it sick. Well, I don't know how long it will take us to get there, you know, how long is it gonna take us to walk up into that other one?
This one you can, you can drive right to it.
Yeah. I mean. Six, we might get there early, I mean.
All right.
I don't know how long we'll be at that other one.
You say quarter or six? Is that what you just said?
Five forty-five.
Yeah, five forty-five.
I hate on that thing.
For six, I mean. Just we don't wanna waste, we don't wanna waste time if we're ready to go, right?
Yeah.
So. Be there sometime between quarter of and six.
Yeah.
Oh, which day now?
Twenty ninth day, the twenty-ninth?
That's what you said, yeah.
Somebody come check that, make sure.
Today's the.
It's July.
Yeah, it's the twenty-nine, June.
June twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Before the meeting. Gives us a chance to notify the abotters. Obviously, you know, I think Phil Mago came to that other. Like visit, we'll look at the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
They come to see this as well, just, uh. Which is fair.
Yeah. You're gonna, you're gonna bury the gas line, you're gonna bury the water line?
Mm-hmm.
They just can't be like together, they just have to be about, they can be the same trench, just separated.
I know, they have to be separated.
What happened to that application? Does someone have that?
You have it.
Did I get it back?
No, it's not, went down that way. Yeah, it's.
Is this?
The application right there?
Yes.
Yeah, so we should give that to Darcy so she can. Make copies for everybody. I'd like to see it. Is this one, I'm getting picky. After this one?
No, that's the one he turned in with the, with the very first application.
So, oh, I see.
Add to Darcy.
Right. All right. Right, right, right. Darcy, did you get any of this?
Oh, sorry. One minute.
Yeah. Okay.
So after on. June twenty-ninth, how soon can we do this project?
Well, then we meet.
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
Which got the site visit. We'll go through the rest of your applications. Then. Be the second Thursday of July.
Do we know how many abotters?
Thirteen.
Um. I'm thinking there aren't a lot of abotters within five hundred feet of there.
Well, she owns. Her house. And then the other abottor would be her brother.
Yeah.
The other one's her cousin.
Yeah.
And then the association owns the land across the road.
Yeah. So I, I think we, just to be safe, we'll need a fee of a hundred dollars. That will cover the mailings. A check can be sent to the town office.
July meeting?
Thirteen.
They're just write on it, planning board. Snyder or. Whatever her company is. Memo line.
So they're only gonna send out?
Gonna send out, I think would probably, we won't notify her.
Right, so there's only one abottor then?
Well, I thought you said the association, within five hundred feet.
Who, who would you send it to the association?
Well, it. Whatever the, if the association has a tax bill. Do they get, i- is it a, is, is it a legal entity that owns? Piece of land?
Like all the roads and stuff?
Well.
I don't know, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I mean, there may be, we. It's easier to get a little extra money and give it back to you than. Than not have enough.
Okay.
Cuz I don't, I can't tell without looking at the tax map. But what abotters might need to be notified. But. Unless we get a waiver from her relatives. To say, we don't care. We have to send notices. And with, and right now we have to send them certified mail.
Okay.
So we.
The thing is, the, the association doesn't have a mailing address.
Well, then we probably don't have to notify the association.
Yes, then the only one would be her cousin, Scott Forman.
And not, not, not a brother.
Her brother's too far, he's more than five hundred feet away.
So there's only one abottor.
Right.
So then, then we'd need sixty dollars.
Okay, now, I need association. Is that a formal association or just a?
I think it's semi-formal, they have like one meeting a year.
Okay, well, they've gotta have an.
They gotta have a notice too.
Yeah, well, someone, is there like a president of the association or anything or a secretary of the association, something like that?
Is it a road association where they collect dues to maintain the road?
Got Forman would be the president of the association, so you can send it to, you put it in the same envelope.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Is one mailing fee gonna kill her?
Thought. Forman, F O R M A N.
Yes.
Also president of the association.
Yes.
You know what they call that association?
Valid Bay.
Valid Bay. Road Association, Valid Bay. You know, look up.
Don't know.
They may be registered with Secretary of State.
L B Corp or something like that, maybe?
Right, and you said, uh. That. In five forty-five and six o'clock. All right. Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
More photos for this one?
That's out of that here.
Oh, these, Darcy, going that way. Um. So let me have the minutes of the main evening, I. You know, if you fill in. I have left a couple blanks on the graph that I.
Yeah, for fees that I didn't.
I wonder if I have written. Uh, the table. Right. On. This is. And. All with a ninety dollar fee. I don't know if I have that information handy. That's true. Well, as far as the minutes. Are there, other than those fees, are there any other changes people are recommending? If I could sort that out.
I guess the only question I'd have is that. The, the, um, Stevens Farm come back or?
Well, I, that was a pre-application meeting, we haven't heard anything back.
Okay, all right.
He was going to. Um. Think about it.
Okay.
Decide what she wanted to do. On the cabin masters. Thing, I didn't hear what the result of the vote was, it was a vote this week. To extend. The implementation of the housing law. For a year or. Towns like Monmouth. And. I think the vote was. Tuesday. Um. I had. I had heard from MMA, they asked to reach out, so I reached out to Greenwood. He said he was. If he had his druthers, he would scrap the whole thing, but I guess he, he voted for the amendment, I think the amendment passed. So that the town is gonna have a year. Figure out. What they need to do for the. Changing the ordinances to allow more than one single residence on a lot and some other changes.
Well, what happened, I heard they were thinking of July twenty-five. Cause. That wasn't gonna give some of them small municipalities adequate time.
More than a year? Well, what I got from MMA. On Monday was. There were different options, I didn't see anything that extended it more, but I think we just have to check, I don't know, which. Hopefully, it's gonna give some more time.
So we'll go into effect this year then?
No, no, it wouldn't sound like it. That will. That will be good because. We haven't done anything in Monmouth on that. Let's see if I can figure out these fees here. I mean, I'm sure it's on the tape, but. I didn't write down, we must have just told Paul. Mom. I have no idea what it was. Myers, I think was a hundred and twenty. And Paul, I think, was ninety. I don't know what. Got some. Some scribbling on my paper, but I can't figure out what it is.
Can we approve him pending?
The. Yeah, once we do that, so we'd have a motion to. Approve the minutes and we'll have to.
Ending, geez.
Figure out what that fee was.
I don't. I don't see anything wrong with that.
No, no. All in favor of accepting those minutes? I don't.
Who motioned, who seconded?
I motioned.
All in favor? I don't know if you can find out, Darcy, what that check was for. Then. Insert the figures in the final version.
Yeah, I don't know how they, I don't know how the girls keep track of anything in that office. I'm sorry, but. And that explains a great deal because when I went in and I said, can you give me the, the planning board information? And I just got a blank look. They give you the deer in the headlights and I. I just got a blank look. Down to the office, I said, this is where all the planning board, anybody wants anything? Everybody says a name, there's a file, whatever they want. No. So I'm gonna get, I'll get something to put, like the slot board has. With everything and anytime I get something like this, I'll take a copy of the map, I'll take a copy of the application, I'll scan everything to you. That'd be great. Um. And then just put everything there and just send you guys an email and said, hey, we got a new application that's in your box.
Get out.
Then we'll come and pick it up. And all.
Kind of works.
That sounds, yeah.
Yeah.
I wish that, I wish. For things like this. That they could get addressed to me and then I can record them. You know, or something, so we can keep.
So we know that they paid.
So we know that they paid because I have a feeling, if we ask them girls, you know, what did Paul root? What did you, what did you get for a check from Paul Root? They're gonna go, I don't know, we just deposit it.
Yeah.
You know?
Well.
They don't write anything, I'm sure they don't keep track of anything. And I'm a bookkeeper, so it's driving me crazy.
And you wanna know why they got an issue with their honor?
Well, I, yeah, but again, it explains a great deal, just like what?
Oh, I just no, noticed that John's. That name was spelled incorrectly, it's an O.
It's J O N, right?
Well. Uh, is it J O N?
Is it John or is it?
Well, the last name is what I picked up.
Oh.
Davinsky. Davinsky. So that if you.
J O N.
If you could find out what that check was, if you could. Or you can just make that correction and add those in.
Okay. It's, oh, it's D O.
It's D O, it's Dominsky. Davinsky.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, there's still some. Problems.
Um, I did the MMA seminar yesterday. It was from four o'clock until eight thirty.
The planning board?
Yeah, it was MMA, all the planning board and appeals board stuff, and I learned so much. It's unbelievable that I'm gonna start, I'm pretty sure these are all on YouTube. I think all these meetings are. But I think to cover our butts, they said you should record everything, you know, everything should be recorded. You know, um.
Well, we used to.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Thing.
The, the, um. Person we had the longest doing the minutes used to bring in one of those little dick.
Well, I'm getting one. I tried to find one. I've been trying to find one for two days and, and.
But I, I thought it was the town, but maybe it wasn't. It was for the Doreen zone.
Thing is. Once you record it, that's public information. Problem is, is there's no system in town of Monmouth to say, what do we do with those recordings? How do we store it? And then it gets long.
For how long?
For how long?
Well, this should be recorded, this is recording now.
Right, and I think this is on Zoom, I think this is on YouTube. It ends up, it ends up being on this, the town's YouTube channel. Because that's how I watched the first select board meeting, and then. Right afterwards, when that was done, the planning board meeting popped up, because I thought, you know, it, it stopped and then it started and I saw Ray. And I went, okay, this is planning board, so. You know, so yes, it is. Public.
It was on TV.
How long archived was?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
You know, we've got.
But they gave a lot of examples of things that, you know, can go wrong, you know, if you don't dot the i's and cross the p's about. You know, they gave the example that this, this church wanted, you know, do a new facade on the church. I think, I can't remember what town, it doesn't matter, but they brought the plans in, and on the plans. It showed a buffer of a line of trees. And nothing was discussed. That they were gonna cut those trees down. Nothing was mentioned and nothing was ever done. They signed off on, you know, on the plan. But they didn't put in writing that this has to, this plan is approved as it is shown to us at this meeting. They didn't put that verbiage in there, so when they went over, you know, to see what was going on, to visit, they had cut all the trees down. And ended up, and it ended up going to court, and the church won, because the planning board did not assess, did not specify that. This plan that was submitted showed them trees on the plan. And they, they took them all down and they won their case. You know, it's, it's just the littlest, littlest things.
Yeah.
You know, that you've got to be. You know, you've gotta be careful with and.
Okay, so. How do we deal with? The application deadline situation? You know, Mr. Root's all perturbed. That we want nine days. To work with this stuff, but the ordinance says five.
So. What does the ordinance say?
The ordinance says five.
And we haven't amended the ordinance, so they, the, the select, she had them. Um.
They put Article twenty-eight on the warrant in June of twenty-one. That the selectmen can adjust. These deadlines. And it got approved back in twenty-one.
Uh, in, in the town meeting?
Yes. And you'll see, it's all there. Now, the tracker, it is there.
Um.
But the ordinance didn't get updated to reflect that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ending ordinance amendment to June order, running deadline. We'd like to move the deadline from Thursday to Tuesday.
That was on the warrant and it passed?
Yeah. What?
Yeah. It's nine days, even though the things that get updated.
And here it is.
Signed in.
With the passage of Article twenty-eight, we're not authorized to set the deadline. Deadline means to be moved back a couple of days to five P M. on the Tuesday. The week prior to the meeting. So that's what it should be.
Yeah, so how do you explain it to somebody like Mr. Root that the damn ordinance says five days?
Well. Yeah, so what we have to do. Is we. A number of the ordinances need amendments.
Well, I think one way around it is you get your ordinance. You take Article twenty-eight. And you tie it to that ordinance on the last page. There's an amendment to that ordinance. Saying it's nine days.
Okay, so on the town website, did the notation.
Yeah, you put that fee sheet there that's been amended.
Yeah, that it's, that the. It's the Tuesday of the week before the meeting. You can't put the number of days. That's not what I think they approved. They just said, has to be in by five P M. The Tuesday before, I mean, Tuesday of the week before, Tuesday of the week before.
So, you know, you get your ordinance and then you have an amended sheet that on War twenty on this date, it got changed.
Exactly, you plan to go in on Wednesdays, right, to? Typically, is that your schedule?
Yeah, to go in and spend any, you know, great amount of time.
On, on, on the Wednesday, which.
So if there's something there on that Tuesday the week before, then.
Because that's what Dave, not Dave, Andy had called me. And said, I guess it was, this cadman had come in and felt it was. Timely, even though it was a mix-up over the paperwork. So there was another one that I said, don't put on, because.
That was cadman you told me not to put on.
Oh, was it cadman? Yeah. Oh, well, I thought it was, um.
Langeliere?
No, there's another one.
Another one, lacking information.
Oh, I don't know. I haven't seen it.
Yeah, there was another one by, I got a copy of it, by Brown.
Oh, that's the, that's a, what the heck is that? I don't have. That's any, uh. Site?
No, I thought it was, but it was very incomplete.
Yeah, it was a site.
Had a copy. This, I thought this, this was the one I meant. Not to put on. But I saved it.
I have it. I can go get it. I have, yeah.
Jacob Brown.
I have it with me.
I'm not even sure, because I, I thought, um. So this is an application for site plan approval. Seven forty-three Main Street from. Jacob and Marissa Brown. And they want to. I think just make a property, a rental property. And so I thought that that's something would be the code enforcement.
Application for site plan approval.
Yeah, Steve, I just read it. But it's. See, I think Dave, I think Andy, I gotta talk to Andy. I think we can. I don't know why that encumbered us.
Yeah, I don't either. It was just, it was in, you know, up on the top, so.
Maybe if it was properly filled out, there might be something there that we didn't state.
What it is.
Should come.
Because you saw it, didn't you, Ray? Yeah, you thought the same thing I did is that. What does Andy think about this? So we'll check, but see, that's dated June fifth, so clearly that wasn't timely. So whether it goes on our agenda for July or Andy deals with it.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that the Zoom is working tonight, since nobody showed up. We're recording, we're here. Um. I'm still kind of working on the fees. We'll kick that down the road to.
Yeah.
Need some more kind of thought. But we should raise the fees and.
Yeah.
Guess so. The problem I've got. But doing away, and you, you can't just automatically do away like. People are being told in the town office. We no longer do escrow account. That's.
But you print the fee schedule offline and it, that's what it says. It says there's escrow, there's every kind of escrow.
The ordinance is, it's also there, so they shouldn't be telling people. We don't do escrow accounts.
Well, they don't wanna do them.
I know they don't wanna do them.
But thing is, our ordinance says this is the process.
Right, so that's one of the amendments. The other question is whether we want to amend to do away with certified mailings. Just regular mailing. And then. You know, and you don't have to worry about, I mean, the cost is.
Oh, yeah.
Then so much less. But.
The cost is less, but then don't we open ourselves up to somebody coming in and saying? I didn't get that.
Well, you, you do what's called the certificate of mailing. Which is a lot cheaper. It just says you ma- we mailed it to your last known address.
It's their responsibility to make sure that their address is kept up to date.
Right.
Yeah, because it gives you a tracking number and.
It does give you a tracking number?
Yeah.
As I say, because you got some postal delivery people that are a little less than. It's our fish game.
Yeah.
But yeah, if, if we raise the fees and we do regular mailings. Then that can be incorporated. Yeah, some people are. Were. Paying more than others, but. What they're getting, but.
Yeah, I made a list of municipalities in this part of the state. And I'll do one, uh. Escrows. How simple is that?
Yeah.
But some of them are very selective. Because someone may incorporate, you know, escrow as opposed to permit fee, a fee for this. You know, a simple site. Finding board fee.
Yeah.
That's right.
Wonder what MMA says?
Don't know. I haven't spoken to anybody at MMA. They, yeah, it might be a.
Question.
Well, I like that. I probably got half a dozen, not too a dozen. I got more than half a dozen different municipalities with their fee structure. They're all close to the same thing.
But you know, like our shoreline fee is fifty dollars. Should be. Twice that.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Maybe even more. Yeah, more entailed, so.
Ah. And, uh. See, one of the things is that the fees was sort of that, you know, you. You'd have to get an estimate of what the building cost was. Then the fee would be based on that. I think we thought. Are people paying too much? Because then they have to go get a building permit, and that fee is based on cost of construction. Whether we're better. Sort of simplify it in some fashion. For people don't. Overpay. Um.
I guess, you know, I'd rather have the money in an account. That when it needs, you know, whether it's engineering or any other technical comes out of it. And then what's left at the end of the project gets returned. Then have Monmouth get a hold of. The property owner or whoever and say, hey, guess what? We need more money.
I think, yeah, that's. Everybody loves a refund check.
Yeah, well, but see, they've lost. They don't have anyone in there who is. I guess, good at keeping track of. That stuff.
Yeah, but, yeah, if, if it's a non. Interest-bearing. Account, it's very, very basic and simple, and the bank or the institution. Takes that sense, the municipality, the statement, and it's.
Yeah, but it just gives you a number. See, that's the pro- if you have, if you put all the money in an escrow. You know, from the bank standpoint, they're just telling you your balance is twenty-five hundred dollars. Yeah. So internally, you have to have something like QuickBooks or something that tells you. Five hundred is.
Right.
Jane Smith and. Two hundred is somebody else, so on, so on. Uh, it, it.
These accounts have to all be separate. You, you can't have one account for anybody. For which eight, ten escrow accounts in one account, the bank. You, you, each escrow account has to be separate.
Well. See, I have an account, I have to have an account for my office, but we can pool it.
Yeah.
You know, it's a pooled account, but internally, at our office, we have to figure out whose money it is, which we. We have a program that we put that information in.
Would it be possible? Because. People are going to bring a check. The, to the town office. Is it possible that? You give them an envelope? That give the town office an envelope. Every check that comes in for the planning board goes in there, and then. Darcy or someone designated from the board is the only person. Who then takes the checks to the credit union, I'm assuming, whatever. To deposit, and so you record before you deposit. What you've received. If you can keep all the checks together, then you can keep track. Of the five hundred from Miss Smith and the two hundred.
Yeah, but you're supposed to have a separate account. You gotta have an.
I believe you're supposed to have it separated.
You can't, I mean, you can have a step, I mean, I don't know why they can't have one escrow.
Cleaning board escrow, and all the checks can't go in, that, you have to have a separate account.
Well, see, what we used to do is we would have. They'd pay one check for the filing fee. And a separate check for the escrow. Now I'm not doing that. I'm just telling them, go pay, and. No one's complaining. They're probably not gonna see any money back. It's messy.
Well, they're not, because nobody's keeping track of it. Yeah, because nobody, nobody has a clue in there.
See, I have an old sheet that tells me what escrow. And, you know, like, we're holding this money for C M P. That was supposed to, can't remember, there was something on the project that we had to keep checking on. Nobody knows about it.
Huh?
I think it was a substitution itself moment.
Yeah. I think we collected a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We still have it?
Well, we should. I don't think they gave it back.
Yeah.
Possibly.
I mean, about a year and a half ago, I, I think I sent in something and said, get rid of this money. But there was some that I didn't. I don't know what they did.
I know they do have some still on the books.
I guess, I don't know, if there's someone I, I'll see if there's someone to talk to, uh. MMA.
You mean, every single, like. Mr. Korea and Mr. Langeliere? They all have to have separate escrow accounts?
Let's erase that.
Wow.
Because that's the way you gotta track it, because you know certain fees, mailing, whatever, and then you're tracking them. So it has to be separate.
Well, you gotta have, you have to have some kind of, I mean, there were, uh, there are accounting programs that you can. Break that down.
Right.
I don't know what the town has. Nothing.
Good question. So I won't ask for a refund for mine then. Thousand dollars. It was a thousand bucks when I did my seven days. In two thousand and ten, we didn't spend. Not, hardly anything, just mailings as far as I knew, you know?
Well, at one time, Publicity Watershed would charge.
Yeah.
A review fee.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were on that list, Rick, but I might not have recognized the name. I'll go, I'll see if I have a copy of that list somewhere.
Darcy, are you? In good standing with a recently sharp accountant?
Well, I don't know. I, I know a lot of them, but. What's your question?
Uh, to get some idea from a, a sharp accountant as to. How escrow account should be handled by a municipality.
That might be an MMA question.
Yeah. See, it comes up, the, the concern is that the, the auditors are the ones that have the concern and they audit the state, the town accounts.
Yeah.
I think they would.
Well, especially if you come down to it, they don't, they don't have a clue what's this for and you, then you get audited on the fourth call, what's all this?
Yeah, yeah.
Now it's a concern.
It's still.
And why, why did you pay this much back to this person and that much back to the other person?
Well, that's my saying, he go, what's this?
So the prior town attorney said, well, why can't you have the applicant do some of the mailings? And the concern was whether they'd get done correctly, right?
Right, and then if it didn't, it goes back on them, I guess, cause. If they didn't get people.
But see, then we don't know. I mean, all we get back is a card. What did they send? We don't know.
Did they actually send them and the person on the other end receive it saying, I never saw it? It's a son of a gun.
Yeah.
There is.
Well, do we have a motion to?
Or do it during.